All right, we're live. This is February, sorry, 12th at 3 o'clock. We're doing the Committee of the Whole regarding the aquatic invasive species in the regional inspection stations in Wright County. We're here to discuss the merits and the future of this program. And we'll begin off with just a short little discussion points over what is being proposed. Somebody from Soled water want to kind of talk us through what's being proposed this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So we're here to talk about the Wright Regional.
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Alicia O'Hare. I'm the Water Planner at Wright Soil and Water. Thank you. Thank you. And we're continuing our discussion of the Regional Inspection Pilot. We gave a detailed presentation on the 2018 season at the December 11th Committee of the Whole, and that full report is available on our website, wrightswcd.org. So we do have copies if there's questions referring to that as well. And then when we get to the official plan, that will be presented at the 26th meeting along with the recommendation that comes from out of here. Just a couple of things that were requested for us to go over at this meeting was the lakes that are being proposed for 2019. There are nine, if you count East and West Sylvia as one lake. There's and then John, Pleasant, Cedar, Sugar, Maple, Granite, Bass, and Moose. Some of these lakes have multiple accesses on them, but it would be all of the public accesses and then private accesses can opt in. They have to give us permission to go there and do the enforcement and the checking. And then operating hours, we won't start any earlier than April 1st. Assuming ice out is after that, which it generally is, we would give seven days notice based on either a prediction or, oh, hey, the ice is suddenly out. We'll start in seven days. So we don't, we won't just hit people with it right away. We want to make sure that we give notice before we get started. But the operating times can shift every two weeks, and we'll have this posted on our website as well. And then once operations get going, we'll put a sign at the access that says these are the current operating hours, and this is when the next change will happen. But they vary between anytime between 5:00 a.m. and 9:30 is the longest period of time, and that's for most of the summer. And it generally corresponds with a half hour before sunrise to a half hour after sundown, and we just kind of round every two weeks. And then the last thing that we have here is an updated budget from the last season. On the left, I have the sources. The main changes are the Maple Lake property owners will be contributing $18,000. That is an addition from the report. And then the Initiative Foundation grant has increased to $168,000. The Wright Soil and Water or the local AIS prevention aid went up to $91,000, and that's to reflect the Wright County Parks generally gives $1,000 to help us for inspections at Schroeder Park. So ultimately, it's coming from Parks to Wright Soil and Water and then going through there.
Alicia, can I, like, for the other lakes, though, Sugar Lake, Granite, Moose, all of the lakes there?
Yes.
They are also receiving AIS money. Do you know how the amounts that each one of those lakes receive, or do they receive no?
Are you referring to the local AIS prevention aid? That comes directly to the, well, it comes to the county, which gives it to the district.
Right. So what, how much do each one of those lakes get? Do you have those figures?
That money's already, it's separate from these. These are the Property Lake Association funds are separate than from what that funds coming to the program.
You're just wondering how much.
Yeah, I want to know how much.
For the 90, so ultimately, there'll be the local AIS prevention aid is we broke it up into a couple of different categories. So as I mentioned, there's the 1,000 that comes from Parks, and that's included in the 91,000 there. We allocate $30,000 for decontamination. That's generally how much we would spend to operate the decontamination unit in previous years. We allocated $25,400 for administration of the regional inspection, and that was.
Maybe I didn't phrase my question well, but let's just say right now, let's say Pleasant Lake. How much money do they receive out of the money that we pass through to you for AIS money? How much does Pleasant receive?
Yeah, we, this year, we didn't necessarily give each lake a certain amount of money. It was, we created a lump sum that was based on the inspection. So for our total inspection budget from the local AIS fund was $99,600. And we tried to figure out how much could go to the regional inspection pilot and how much would go to at the ramp.
So you only, you gave 99,000 to all of the lakes in totality?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And then so 34,600 got allocated specifically for RIP, or Regional Inspections.
And that's in that 91?
That's in the 90,000.
Okay, so does Lakes, Pleasant Lake, do they receive any other AIS money from the, from the grant, from the AIS grant?
Only treatment would be a separate thing. They may get treatment allocations.
But you don't have the number that, you don't have those numbers.
I mean, we're currently in our, they're submitting grants for the treatment portion at that point.
How much of that too was in that water treatment was of that 220, or 230,000? Because the treatment is separate from the AIS. Yeah, that's where, that's a separate pot of money.
It's all from the local AIS prevention aid, but it's a different allocation.
Okay, so take a lake that's not in this deal, okay?
Sure.
Waverly Lake. Do they get any AIS money?
They will, right now, what we're planning is about one shift of inspections per week from fishing opener until Labor Day.
And then where is at the, at the?
At the ramp. And that's basically how we do our allocations. We try and budget based on time so that.
So they don't get any direct money? They just get inspection? That's the way it is with every lake?
Yes.
Except these, it's put in that 91.
Right. And this is, this is, we ultimately, we pay our contractor directly, so it's just, we're going to give him $90,000 specifically for the regional inspection.
So a lake that's not listed on here would just kind of randomly get some inspection hours?
Yeah, well, we will, we, what we tell our contractor is we want this lake to have about 180 hours total, which averages out to one shift per week. And then he, he'll fill.
All right, we're live. This is February, sorry, 12th at 3:00. We're doing the Committee of the Whole regarding the aquatic invasive species in the regional inspection stations in Wright County. We're here to discuss the merits and the future of this program. And we'll begin off with just a short little discussion points over what is being proposed. Somebody from Soil and Water want to kind of talk us through what's being proposed this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So we're here to talk about the Wright Regional Inspector...
Your name?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Alicia Hare. I'm the water planner at Wright Soil and Water. Thank you. And we're continuing our discussion of the regional inspection pilot. We gave a detailed presentation on the 2018 season at the December 11th Committee of the Whole, and that full report is available on our website, wrightswcd.org. So, and we do have copies if there's questions referring to that as well. And then when we get to the official plan, that will be presented at the 26th meeting, along with the recommendation that comes out of here. Just a couple of things that were requested for us to go over at this meeting was the lakes that are being proposed for 2019, there are nine, if you count East and West Sylvia as one lake. There's, and then John, Pleasant, Cedar, Sugar, Maple, Granite, Bass, and Moose. Some of these lakes have multiple accesses on them, but it would be all of, or the public accesses, and then private accesses can opt in. They have to give us permission to go there and do the enforcement and the checking. And then operating hours, we won't start any earlier than April 1st. Assuming ice out is after that, which it generally is, we would give seven days notice based on either a prediction or, oh hey, the ice is suddenly out, we'll start in seven days. So we don't, we won't just hit people with it right away. We want to make sure that we give notice before we get started. But the operating times can shift every two weeks, and we'll have this posted on our website as well. And then once operations get going, we'll put a sign at the access that says, these are the current operating hours, and this is when the next change will happen. But they vary between, anytime between 5:00 AM and 9:30 is the longest period of time, and that's for most of the summer. And it generally corresponds with a half hour before sunrise to a half hour after sundown, and we just kind of round every two weeks. Oops. And then the last thing that we have here is an updated budget from the last season. On the left, I have the sources. The main changes are the Maple Lake property owners will be contributing $18,000. That is in addition from the report. And then the Initiative Foundation grant has increased to $168,000. The Wright Soil and Water, or the local AIS prevention aid went up to $91,000, and that's to reflect, the Wright County Parks generally gives $1,000 to help us for inspections on, at Schroeder Park. So ultimately, it's coming from Parks to Wright Soil and Water, and then going through there.
Alicia, can I, like, for the other lakes, though, Sugar Lake, Granite, Moose, all of the lakes there?
Yes.
They are also receiving AIS money. Do you have the amounts that each one of those lakes receive, or do they receive no?
Are you referring to the local AIS prevention aid?
Right.
That comes directly to the, well, it comes to the county, which gives it to the district.
Right. So what, how much do each one of those lakes get? Do you have those figures?
That money's already, it's separate from these. These are, the Property Lake Association funds are separate then from what that funds come into the program.
No, no, I got it. But...
You're just wondering how much.
Yeah, I want to know how much.
Do you want to know what the delineation is?
For the 90, so ultimately, there'll be, the local AIS prevention aid is, we broke it up into a couple of different categories. So as I mentioned, there's the 1,000 that comes from Parks, and that's included in the 91,000 there. We allocate $30,000 for decontamination. That's generally how much we would spend to operate the decontamination unit in previous years. We allocated $25,400 for administration of the regional inspection, and that was...
Maybe I didn't phrase my question well, but let's just say, right now, let's say Pleasant Lake, how much money do they receive out of the money that we pass through to you for AIS money? How much does Pleasant receive?
Yeah. We, this year, we didn't necessarily give each lake a certain amount of money. It was, we created a lump sum that was based on the inspection. So for our total inspection budget from the local AIS fund was $99,600. And we tried to figure out how much could go to the regional inspection pilot, and how much would go to at the ramp.
So you only, you gave 99,000 to all of the lakes in totality?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, so 34,600 got allocated specifically for RIP, or regional inspections.
And that's in that 91?
That's in the 90,000.
Okay. So, does Lakes, Pleasant Lake, do they receive any other AIS money from the grant? From AIS grant?
Only, treatment would be a separate thing. They may get treatment allocations that were...
But you don't have the number that, you don't have those numbers.
I mean, we're currently in our, they're submitting grants for the treatment portion at that point.
How much of that too was in that, water treatment was of that 220, or 230,000? Because the treatment is separate from the AIS.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's where, that's a separate pot of money.
Okay.
It's all from the local AIS prevention aid, but it's a different allocation.
Okay. So, take a lake that's not in this deal, okay?
Sure.
Waverly Lake.
Okay.
Do they get any AIS money?
They will, right now, what we're planning is about one shift of inspections per week from fishing opener until Labor Day.
And then where is, at the, at the access?
At the ramp. And that's basically how we do our allocations. We try and budget based on time, so that...
So they don't get any direct money?
No.
They just get inspection? That's the way it is with every lake?
Yes.
Except these, it's put in that 91,000.
Right. And this is, this is, we ultimately, we pay our contractor directly, so that, it's just, we're going to give him $90,000 specifically for the regional inspection.
So a lake that's not listed on here would just kind of randomly get some inspection hours?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we will, we, what we tell our contractor is, we want this lake to have about 180 hours total, which averages out to one shift per week. And then he, he'll fill, fill those in.
Okay. Thank you.
It's okay. Thank you for, that's good clarifications.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the right side of the budget there, it's primarily the same except for the enforcement line. We have, we're working with the Sheriff's Department, and the contract is, it's just short of $95,500, but we've just rounded it off to make it look nice. So about $95,000 going to enforcement. So the total expense is expected is $370,600.
So I'm going to at least kind of give some clarification to those in the public that maybe haven't followed this quite along. We basically, going back, was it six months, seven months ago, we created a work group to kind of vet some of these numbers to make sure that it wasn't being driven by any one side. So between Soil and Water, the County Board, a variety of other entities, set, the DNR, sat down and had some discussions, at least from a numbers perspective, so that we at least all agree that the numbers are factual to what we think the true cost is, that nobody's paying for more, are giving services that they're not being compensated for. We want the program to be standing on its own merits, so that it's representing the true cost to operate this program. So from that standpoint, that was a change that has taken place in the last seven months, that there's a work group that's kind of driven a lot of these, this information.
I have a question.
Sure.
So when you go to this station, are they actually going to wash your boat?
So I'm going to have you come up here, so I can actually, because if anybody talks to get on the record, I'll have to get their name, so.
Say what?
If you want to come up here, just give me your name, that'd be great.
Yep.
My name's Tony Faky. So I went to this inspection station in Annandale 15 times last year. The only time they washed my boat is when I asked them to. You're paying three people $20 an hour to sit there and do what can be done at the landing. Now you're proposing Maple Lake? I live seven miles from 37 Access. I'm not driving to Annandale to get my boat inspected unless the governor signs a state law that says, "I have to." I don't have a problem doing it, but I have a problem driving to Annandale to drive back to the landing I use.
And, you know, as far as you're washing your boat, now, it's basically based on, when they ask the questions to you where your boat's been, determines a risk factor and determines, after they do their visual inspection, and based on your answers to your question, will determine whether your boat would need to be deconed or not. The washing your boat is the decon factor to it.
Why can't they put that at the landing?
Because it would be cost effective.
If they got one in Clearwater... They got one in Clearwater.
A decon station?
A decon station.
Not that I'm aware of, a decon station on Clearwater?
Hobbs Bay.
Yeah, Alicia?
I'm sorry, I just, if you... There is a decontamination unit that rows around in Stearns County, and Clearwater is one of the locations that they do visit. And that, Stearns County works with one, and the DNR also will occasionally place decontamination units specifically at ramps.
I was just saying, I was saying, not permanently fix it, yeah.
This program is great. General public aside, I witnessed five lake homeowners on Pleasant Lake allowing people to land boats out of their yard. So the people that basically want to keep us off their lake, because a lot of lake homeowners I talked to, it shouldn't be a public body of water. They paid so much higher taxes than landowners do, you know, that's, when's Mother Nature going to be Mother Nature?
And I appreciate your comments on it. That's why these conversations take place right now, is to find out what's the best method that we should be going forward with this. So, appreciate your comments. Yes, I'm going to go down to Vern?
Yeah.
Would you like to, yep, please come forward.
Anglers for Habitat. I would like to talk when you're done with Alicia and your other business.
No, this is a great time.
But since we got on this subject, I also went to the station and asked for a decontamination, and they said no. And I had to argue with them that it was part of the project that I could voluntarily request it, that I'd been on a lake that had AIS in it, and, and they called the police on us. And that's a true story, and Alicia knows it. They called the police, and they took us over and did a cursory spraying of my boat to, so we wouldn't leave before the police came. And the police showed up and said, "We had every right to, to be there, and we had every right to request this." Now, now, there's another part of it, I want to be clear about that, is there was a reporter with me from Outdoor News, and he, he did have his camera, and he wanted to take pictures of the decontamination process, and he promised them that he would not put their pictures in it, and that they would just show the hands and the sprayer. And for that reason, they called the police on us. Now, so my point is, is that they're not, they're not planting the seed about doing If you look at the number of voluntary decontaminations they did, it's miniscule. So if it was, in fact, an AIS prevention project, you would see that decontaminations voluntary requests should increase. They should be sending the message that this is what you need to do to prevent the spread of AIS. Instead, they're reluctant to do it. And I just want to open, if you have a question about that?
Well, I, I would, I mean, maybe somebody from the inspection program could answer that, but I would think it would be good publicity if, if the news media came out there. I would think we want to advertise this, right?
I'm amazed that, this is the first I've heard about it. And I'm appalled that, from my standpoint, if I would have known about that, I mean, I'm, right now, I'm kind of upset that you just found out.
They said we were supposed to make an appointment in advance to let them know when we would be coming, so they would be totally prepared, and they would have a supervisor onsite that could explain the ins and outs of the Wright County Pilot Project Program. And our point was...
And you heard that from who?
Uh...
The people at, yeah, go ahead. Now, because this is the first I heard of this.
Yeah. Thank you, Vern. So I did, I did know about this incident, and I spoke to the inspectors afterwards, so I'm, you know, I'm simply reporting what they, they told me, is that the, the reporter was fairly pushy, is the report that I got, and was fairly close while the decontamination was occurring. And ultimately, we did have to take measures afterwards to make sure that there was a perimeter of cones set up, based on the inspector feedback. So my, my understanding was that, again, the inspectors did not want to have their, their pictures taken as part of, part of the report when the, the decontamination did start, that the reporter was not at a safe distance with the high-pressure wash, and that was part of the reason that the police were, were called. And that's the side of the story that I heard. But we have, we were working with our inspectors throughout the season to make, to, you know, they, they would go through the training and be, okay, this boat doesn't need a decontamination by, by what they were taught, but if they say that they want one, they should get one, you know? If they, if they want to have their, their engine flush, they want to have it sprayed down, absolutely, please do that. And we, we worked very hard with our inspectors throughout the season, and that is one thing that we have been planning, working to remedy, and part of the reason that the inspector coach position has been added to not only the regional inspection plan, but the at-the-ramp inspection program, to ensure that inspections will be of the highest quality.
And, and I would add that they turned the sprayer towards the reporter, because they felt like he, he was getting too close with his camera.
I, yeah, I...
But, but further, we came with a bass boat, they did not inspect our live wells, they didn't look in our bilge, they didn't look in our compartments, they didn't ask me to lower my motor to see if I had water in my motor. They waved us through, we went down to the lake, went fishing, we found that the tag that they attached, that little blue tag, they didn't attach it to the boat, they attached it to our bow hook. So it wasn't even attached to our boat. And we reported this to a supervisor who was down there, who was driving by, and she said, "Yeah, that happens all the time. I find them laying on the road." So, so the thing is, so after using the lake, we went back, we requested it, they called the police before we even got up to the decontamination unit. So they didn't call the police because the inspector was getting too close. They called the police because they, they thought it was illegal for us to do it.
There should be a police report for that, too. Maybe I'd like to see that.
I'd know, I'd be interested, too.
I imagine.
So this, this all occurred, it was written up in Outdoor News, and, but I want to talk more later, so.
By all means, if you, yeah, if you want, just, we'll come, we'll reach you back up to speak.
I would like to add one more thing before I leave.
Sure. And you got, and you got a city, and what was your name again?
We didn't get your name.
My name's Tony Faky, I'm from Minnesota.
Tony Faky, Tony Faky, all right.
So since you didn't hear about that, did you happen to hear that the restoration company that sprayed granite last year got fined because they did it wrong and killed a whole bunch of emergent vegetation?
The, I'm sorry, I missed the...
The, the people that go around and spray the weeds.
The lake service provider, yes.
Yeah.
What about them?
They killed a bunch of emergent vegetation on the lake.
And from a county standpoint, the lake service providers are separate, they're outside of our purview. I mean, I couldn't comment to that.
Okay, but they're part of, they're part of these people, because these people are the ones that issued the permits.
No, no. They're contracted by the lake associations, so they're not, they're not, they have nothing to do with Soil and Water, they don't have anything to do with the county. It's, it's a, it's a private agreement. The DNR gives them a license to spray the lakes, and basically, that list is given up to lake associations, and they can contact these, contract these vendors off this list of approved vendors from the DNR.
Well, see, I was under the understanding it was Soil and Water that made the permits.
No, no. The DNR gives those permits out and allows them, so.
The DNR.
Nope. But thank you, Tony, I appreciate all your information. Thank you. So, going forward here, Kathy, you want to give some, a few words, or you want to wait to go skip down the list, or Russ, would you like to come up?
Yeah, I'm not going to be antagonistic here. I...
Give his name.
My name is Russ Fortner, and I'm with the GLSA Greater Lake Sylvia Association. I'm their president. I'm also a member of RIP. And I've been involved in this from the very beginning. I've seen the commissioners, I've seen Soil and Water, I've seen the DNR. I can't tell you how many times we've sat down and talked about stuff, and it seems like every time we turn around, there's a roadblock put in front of us. And this was a plan that was devised by the DNR itself. We're trying to follow those in, in a manner that is, as a five-year pilot program, there's going to be a lot of crap that happens that we have to work out. We know that. And right now, it's Soil and Water that's hiring the people, that are training, that are doing whatever. Nobody else is. So it's not, it is RIP, but it isn't the people really behind it. I hear a lot of times about, I've never heard this in a, and I've been with the GLSA for years, I've never heard a plan or a talk about keeping people off our lake. It's always, you know, people say, "Well, you refer to it as my lake." I said, "Well, yeah. I refer to it as my lake. I refer to my house as my house, my car, whatever. It's just a matter of talk. It's not my lake, we know that." But people really jump on that, that are visiting, fishing, doing whatever. The GLSA invites fishermen. We have spent a lot of money trying to keep the lake, trying to keep it up to date, and I don't know where it all comes from, but it just seems to continually roll on and roll on. Three years ago, Blaine Barkley and I heard about Coronas. We went out there, and that, what we saw, I have to tell you, would turn your stomach if you're a, have anything to do with the lake. It would set back what we know of lake life 50 years. Everything that we know is out the window. Little kids running on a dock, forget it. If they fell into this stuff, they would drown. It's that thick. The only way this is going to get resolved, I think, is through a coalition of the county, the DNR, fishermen, and the lake associations, or RIP. There is no other way. It's got to be a consideration of everybody coming together and working something out. It's, to sit here and point fingers isn't getting us anywhere. So I'm just still of the advocate that we all need to work on this to get it resolved, or we're all going to be in a big problem. Lakes will deteriorate. Right now, I hear Wright County sort of scared, because instead of being the first, it's like we're asking for trouble. Well, I personally challenge anybody to come up with another county in the state that has more AIS in it than Wright County does. Lake Sylvia's got, I think, five invasive species. I don't know of another lake that has that many. So anyway, I'm done, that's it.
Russ, could I ask, ask you a question quick? I'm just wondering if you had any experience with the inspection program? If you've gone through there and had good or bad, or...
I went through it twice, with the pontoon and with the fishing boat. And was I happy? No. I, I think it should have been...
More thorough?
Yes. And the people that were there, it was in the fall when I was going through, and at the end of the season, and it wasn't the best inspectors, but we're now in the process of writing procedures of some kind of a plan to instruct these people. They were hired, and I think basically pushed into, okay, here's your hours, here's what you got to do. We need more, we need some time to get this thing worked out, and it's going to take time, because there's people involved.
And then one other, when, when you were there, I mean, I could kind of see if they might miss some things if there was a big line. Was there a big line?
No, I drove in and pulled right up. I was the only one there, both times.
So it could have been a real thorough inspection?
It could have been, yeah.
Okay. So that's a training.
And I had, I had a pontoon, and the tag system, like this gentleman said earlier, I went down, I'm trying to figure out where in the hell's my tag? It fell off or something, but I found it after I dropped the boat in. It was wound up in the...
Anchor room?
In the anchor line, and I've got it pulled out, and I put it in the machine, or put it in over into the storage unit. But, you know, it's all learning processes, and nobody thinks about everything until it's too late. And now, everybody's got ideas, but we need to sit down and work together. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, Russ. Kathy?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Johnsrude. I live at 7646 Isaac Avenue Northwest. I would just like to thank you for your opportunity this afternoon to voice my support for the Wright Regional Inspection Program, and the important phase gate that we're going to be facing later in the month regarding expansion. Cedar Lake has been welcomed to the table for all of the regional inspection program conversations. We've been part of it since the beginning, and we are ready to join. We believe it's a very important program. Yeah, there's things to work out, and AIS is inconvenient. However, this is a first-in-the-state program. We believe we've touched the points that we've been talking about, to better train the inspectors, make sure that decontaminations, courtesy ones, are provided freely and willingly, because that is part of the deal. And again, we just voice our support for the expansion for 2019.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Mike? Is this good?
I think with our new ASI advisory group that we have formed, we're making really good strides on the program. We're doing that to make sure the boats clean, get cleaned properly and inspected properly, because we can't do a program that's not working properly. So we, we invested our time, the commissioners and everybody into the ASI advisory group to be able to enhance this program. We don't want to inconvenience people without doing a good, good job, and we all understand Just to touch on the, the lakes in the area, they've been spending between $40,000 and $80,000 a year to keep... and eighty thousand dollars a year to keep all of us using the lakes from pontooning to swimming to, to fishing, to skiing, to try and keep them clean so the whole public can use the lake. I think that's, uh, it gets frustrating when I hear that we're trying to keep people off the lakes from the, the associations because they're just trying to, they're just trying to do what we're all trying to do is keep our environment clean for the next generation and our grandkids. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Vern, if you want to.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, my name is Vern Wagner. I'm from the cities. I'm vice president of a group called Anglers for Habitat. And we're a statewide organization and a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). And our mission is to bring the angler's voice to conversations about angling access, AIS, and aquatic plant management. So, uh, you know, I, I'm representing what our board, uh, has, has determined would be an appropriate response. And, um, we're all in favor of preventing AIS. We're, we, we just cringe every time we see a new lake being announced that they found zebra mussels in. So we're, we're no different than anybody else on that aspect. And we, we also believe in pilot projects. And I, and I think that if there is a better mousetrap out there, you know, we certainly believe that that, that should be given some due, you know? Because, uh, you know, right now we're, we've slowed AIS, um, but we, we haven't seemed to prevent, completely prevent the spread. And maybe we can't, maybe there's a point where you can't, but we certainly would support anyone to do it. Now, our concern with this project is that it's not an AIS prevention project. That, that the lake associations see this as a way of preventing AIS. And in fact, it's more of a cost effectiveness of how to spend the money on inspectors. So rather than having to pay for inspectors to do entrance and exit inspections at the ramp, let's have them all go to a central location. And if you look at that, uh, the couple thousand people who did that, you know, it was successful for them. You know, they, they obeyed the law and they went to the inspection station and they got inspected and then they went and launched their boat. And there wasn't, there were no long lines. Everybody was accommodated in a, you know, pretty reasonable way, except for me. I don't know. But, uh, uh, you know, uh, there's, there's no problem with that. But the thing is, is nobody looked at the boats when they left. Nobody looked at the boats when, as they were leaving the ramp because they had spent all the money on this checkpoint rather than.
It sounds like you tried to get yours treated after.
I tried to, yeah. I tried to get mine. But, you know, uh, the average Joe Fish, weekend fisherman, he doesn't have time to go back to the inspection station.
Get treated.
And get a decon, you know? Cause it's Sunday. And, okay, but here's, here's my thoughts, okay? We don't know who's using that state access at Sylvia. We only know who's parking there. And we, we don't know how many people are coming to that access, launching or picking up a boat and then driving over and, and parking at their cabin. We don't know how many people are using the Cairo access because we're not, you know, Wright County isn't allowed to, to look at that. So there's boats going in and out there. And then there's private homeowners who have ramps on their property who are putting boats in and out. Now, um, so, so we're saying if this was an AI, if you really want to prevent AIS, you need to be at least knowing that. You know, why isn't there a camera at that access to see who's actually going in and out? We're only looking at the boats, at the people who park in the ramp. And we're not inspecting those boats except for at the beginning. And numerous people have told me that they come and they park and they launch and, and their wife or their son drives the, the boat back, the car back. So they don't have to put up with it. Now, when, and then the other question is, and finally my final point, well, two final points. One, we think that there should be a, a conversation held, a, a bigger conversation held about this before you proceed. Your AIS committee is made up of one angler. You've got lake shore people, you've got county attorneys, you've got sheriffs, you've got, uh, uh, county board members, but you, who you're missing.
I would love to have, we, I tried really hard. I reached out to a handful of different people. It was hard to get people to actually come.
Well, yeah, people, people aren't, people from the city aren't going to drive up here to a meeting every two weeks.
Well, and that's what the goal was, not to have to have every two weeks. So I would have really rearranged to try and get some anglers to it. I really wanted.
We would like, we would like to see a whole, a meeting. We would like to have a big meeting, have the, your AIS committee be there, have sort of a panel discussion and let anglers express their views and, and tell their story and their experience before this thing is grown to, to, to something bigger. That's, that's one request we have. And, and, and the other, other request is that, um, you find a way to make exit inspections available and decontaminations available. If nobody's using that decon unit up at that site, um, then that's a problem. And if you're paying all this money to maintain that unit and, and to train staff, I don't know the number of decons they did, um, compared to the boats, um.
Do you like to pull that up?
Sure.
Do they have that?
So, so in any event, we would like to see, uh, this become, morph into a AIS prevention program and, and not just be a pilot project to test the cost effectiveness of an off-site inspection station.
Which I will say that the one thing that having the roaming inspectors offers that this doesn't is that you do get to catch people going in and out. Whereas this only catches people going in.
Yeah.
And what that tells me is that tells me, we don't want your, your species in Wright County, but we'll happily give ours to you. So, you know, you take your boat out, take it someplace else, we'll give it to you, but we don't, you know?
Right. Oh, and I remember my other point. People say that the, I don't think that this project was done to keep people off their lake. I'm not, I'm not one of those. But if you look at the numbers, uh, there's far fewer people coming to the access than there were before the pilot. And I think it's about a third. About a third of who used to use the access. This is hard data now. This is data that she has collected. This is based on license plates. It's not subjective data. It's in the, it's in your report. That if you look at the license plates of the vehicles, they're, now if, if you run a business and a third of your business all of a sudden disappears when somebody opens something, you see a correlation. See? So yes, people are avoiding coming to the lake. And that's where this whole idea that it's being done to keep people off your lake because people are being, aren't, aren't using the lake. Is it because the lake association is constantly consciously trying to accomplish that? No. You know, it's many things, but that's why, you know, but that's out there. What do you got there?
I can put it up on the projector.
Sure.
Uh, this is regarding, uh, decontaminations. So in, uh, sorry, I'm not sure how to do focus on here.
You should turn off the light or not.
I don't know.
Maybe it's not going to.
At the bottom on this side.
Is that a little better?
Kind of get an idea.
Okay. So in, uh, 2016, we did 155 decontaminations. 2017, it was up to 332. And then it dropped down to 242, um, this year. We do know that there was one lake service provider that was constantly coming in 2017 to do courtesy and he was not coming with every single boat, um, to do, to do a decontamination every single time. He may have been coming for inspections, I don't know. Um, so, and then we also attribute that there was some loss of visibility in, uh, 2018 for decontaminations. The, in 16 and 17, you could see the decontamination unit from Highway 55. Oh, what's that? What's going on over there? You know, you, you can't see it anymore from the site. And that's, you know, partially a space issue. Um, the bottom chart is the number of license plates going through the decontamination. So we had 96 in 2016, 194 in, uh, 2017, and 185 in, um, 2018. So that's the number of different boats that were recorded as going through the decontamination you, um, process in, uh, RIP. Um, and then the last thing he was referring to, uh, sorry, this is on two pages here. Uh, in 2016, uh, we're focusing on Lake Sylvia because they had the most coverage prior to the regional inspection station. So it's the closest you can get to, um, they, they just, they, you know, had the most time covered. So there were two, 2,169 license plates observed in, uh, 2016.
Looked by DNR.
Oh, yes. Uh, yeah, and then the DNR saw an additional 179. Thank you, Heidi. And then, uh, in, uh, 2017, the Wright Soil and Water saw 100, 1,862. On the DNR saw, uh, 164. And then in 2018, this is license plates observed at the regional inspection station. This is, uh, 1,428. And, uh, then 300, or then the DNR didn't do inspections on Sylvia, uh, in, uh, 2018 because they, we were, had the full coverage with regional inspection stations. So if you consider the drop from 2016 to, uh, 2018 that Vern is referring to, in the number of license plates observed by inspectors, it's about 34%.
So is there, okay, do you have some more comments?
So, uh, thank you. And I, and if you would hold a bigger meeting, I, I'd pledge to try to bring bodies.
And Vern, I think, I mean, cause coming out here today, especially with being two commissioners short, we're very likely to come out of this meeting with no recommendations. And that we, the next county board meeting wouldn't be till the 26th. It could be held off even beyond that. And I would be happy to put together an opportunity to, if, if you feel like there's some people out there that aren't being heard, I, I want at least everybody to feel like they had a voice in this, regardless of what the outcome is.
They don't want to come during the week because they work.
So you, and you want, no, I think this would be something I would do in a small group. I don't think this would be something I could do as far as a county board perspective.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I myself on a personal level, and if maybe one other commissioner wants to join me, I'd be happy to, uh, find a way to facilitate. And if any of our members that are on our AIS committee would want to join us, great.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Wayne, I just want to make a point of, you know, the exit inspections and we really looked at that and that would have been ideal. There's just no real way to enforce that. But people by state law are supposed to inspect their boats and pull their plugs when they leave a lake.
Yeah.
So that's really up to the, that's really up to the boater or the other watercraft to make sure that they're clean. So that's, you know, if you see, if you notice any, any weeds, I mean, go get it, go get your boat decon because that's going to.
Yeah.
Prevent the spread.
I know. That's what I say, too.
Yep.
But respectfully, it's being done. Exit inspections are being done by DNR AIS Level 1, Level 2 inspectors on every other, in every other county, on every other lake that they provide inspectors.
And we were doing that, and we still do it in Wright County on the lakeside.
Yeah, we still.
But they were consistently done. I mean, if you go to Stearns County or Douglas County or Morrison County or Aiken County, you meet these wonderful people who are out there. They're going over your boat, they're looking in your live wells, they're inspecting for mud and weeds, they're running their hands along the side of the boat to see if there's zebra mussels. And they do that when you leave, when you come and when you leave. And to me, I consider that an AIS prevention effort.
Yeah, if we could get more DNR, you know, inspectors that are, are landing, that would be, I mean, our, yeah, it'd be great.
Well, you know, they're, they're hiring, the county are hiring these inspectors. They're not working for the DNR.
Okay, so they're not DNR inspectors?
No.
I mean, well, basically it's like the rovers ones that we have right now that don't work within the inspection station. They work for soil and water. They're, they're not contracted through you. I don't know who we pay. We delegate the authority to soil and water indirectly.
Indirectly.
Indirectly, they're paid to the county.
See, they know when the peak times are. They've got this, all the data. They know when the peak times are. They know when they should probably be having inspectors at every lake, uh, to do exit interviews and education and say, "By the way, there's a DNR contamination unit up here. Would you, you know, we would like to encourage you to use it. You've been on a lake that has five different types of AIS in it. You know, please go up and use that AIS station, decontamination station." You know? So I don't know.
Well, that's what we still do.
Nobody solved this. I don't have the answer. But I, but I know that this is not technically an AIS prevention.
Anyone else I'd like to, uh, comment? Chris?
Uh, my name is Chris Hector and I'm from the, uh, the Greater Lake Sylvia Association and the Wright Regional Inspection Program. There's some, there are some good comments and some, uh, particular things I wanted to mention. The first one is on exit inspections. I would love exit inspections. Uh, we asked for exit inspections in the Wright Regional Inspection Program. We'd still like to have them. As Commissioner Houston mentioned, there's some difficulties in, and how do we do this? How do we make this happen? And how do we enforce that? And if we have some bright ideas, um, for how you do this and how you make it, uh, uh, fair, okay? How, how you can do the enforcement, um, we're all ears. As comparing this, saying that only exit inspections, um, constitute a, uh, an AIS prevention program, I'd, I'd say that's, um, uh, not a fair characterization. Exit inspections are lovely, they're useful, they're helpful, um, and they're one technique. One of the things, uh, when we looked at the numbers, and I, and I, I think this is really important, is that if you don't inspect a boat on exit, if you don't have an inspector there, that, that lovely work doesn't happen. And so at some point you have to look at the effectiveness, uh, of your program. Am I getting to the boats? Am I getting the number of inspections? The overall inspection rate of this program, um, we, we improved inspections by 55%. That's a value to everybody, everybody in this room that cares about fighting AIS, that's a value to us. And, uh, if you go back and take a look at the numbers, uh, we, we focused on Lake Sylvia, but right next to Lake Sylvia were the numbers for Lake John and Lake Pleasant. And for Lake Pleasant, we were covering about 4% of the available time. So what wasn't happening was we weren't getting inspections from, uh, for Lake Pleasant and, uh, a number of other lakes. If you look at the expanded program, again, many of these lakes do not have the time, the resources available to mount an individual full-scale inspection program. So, uh, if we're going to present ideas and get other opinions in the room and. So, if we're going to present ideas and get other opinions in the room and work to that, that's the problem you have to solve. Because if you're not inspecting, if you can't physically get to all those boats, you've got a problem. And our numbers are very low. The DNR by themselves can't solve this, they don't have the resources, and you've seen the aid from the DNR, the allocations of inspectors go down from year to year. The boost of the state aid has been helpful, but it's simply not enough. Until you make this more efficient, you're not going to get the value that you're hoping to get. Lastly, I would appreciate, you know, from Vern's comments, that he didn't say that lake associations were trying to prevent access to lakes. I can tell you personally, from my experience with, you know, with the Lake Sylvia, the Greater Lake Sylvia Association, that's an association that's been around since 79. Most of the early work was working on cleaning up the clarity of the lake, it was, and all the other things that we've done in terms of weed control, those have been going on for years and years and years. This is not a stunt, and I appreciate the comments there. I think the last part of this is that we really need to move forward with great speed, and we need to continue this program, and the reason that we need to do this is that we have a limited amount of time for this conversation, for this discussion. Because you're discussing it, because you're evolving the program, doesn't mean you have to stop, well, let's throw away all the work, let's not do anything while we, while we sit and chat about it. We have to have the conversations, but we need to move forward. And the next critical component, there's two critical components that we're working on this year, that I think are very important and will feed into the conversation, and the first one is on enforcement. We have to look at enforcement, it has to be scalable, it has to be efficient, it has to be legal, right? And, and we have to try those things out. And the second part is that this program, this, this pilot that we did was limited numbers to three lakes, and that's not enough to show you the efficacy that you can get once you get some real traffic to the program. So, I highly recommend that those that are interested in actually solving problems, come to discussions and lend their ideas. What we do, I encourage us all to not stop and to move forward. Oh, and the last bit, is we need more decons, and, and, and last year, they went down, and again, the decon unit was centrally located before, centrally located now, it services the entire county, and we're looking for ideas to drive more traffic to that.
Chris, thank you, and I appreciate it that, you know, and I'll take you for your word, that you're not trying to keep people off your lake, but I have to say, I've talked to other, people from other lakes up in the area, and their concern is if they don't get their lake on here now, it will funnel everybody into their lake. So, within other lake owners, property owners on lakes up there, there's at least that perception, whether it's, it's your intent or not, I think it might be a, you know, a side effect, you know, it's like, I think, was it Vern?
Yeah.
Said, said that, you know, it may not be intentional, but, you know, it could, you know, I guess if I'm going to go fishing and I don't want to get hassled, I'll go over to this little lake instead of Sylvia. You know, I don't know, I'm not a fisherman, so I, but I'm, I wonder if that isn't out there, so maybe even unintentionally, it is driving people to some other lakes.
Right, and, and, and I would be, I would be shocked if there weren't individuals that-
Make that decision.
-make that decision. Really, the, two, two things to look at there. The first is that that effect is magnified when you have regional inspections and it covers three lakes, okay? As you, as you look at, and again, what we're trying to do is look at the state of Minnesota, and what can we do to double or quadruple the number of inspections that are being One way is clearly to spend four times as much money. And, you know, that would be lovely, if somebody can find the money, that'd be lovely. The other way is to get more efficient at it, and this is an efficiency thing. So, what I would suggest is, part of it is going to grow over time, right? People are going to get used to this. Part of it is, it gets better if you have more regional inspection stations, right? Because it now becomes more cost-effective. And I think, you know, part of what we're trying to do is demonstrate that you can do it once, accept that you're going to get some of that effect, but you should measure it, and you should get some better numbers. I would dispute that we've, we've, we've dropped 30 percent since we inspected well over 1,000 more boats. So, you know, let's, let's look at the numbers there.
So here's, I mean, I'm going to get in and put a, fundamentally, those that follow the law do, those that don't follow the law don't. So that brings the next question, is, those that follow the law are more likely to go to the regional inspection station and get inspected, those that don't are going to go right to the lake, put their boat in anyways. Now, that poses the question then, are we spending our money wisely? Do we want to put our enforcement at the point of entry in catching those two or three people than we are basically policing the people that follow the law? Because right now, we're putting most of our efforts in policing those that follow the law, whereas when we were doing the roving expression, the roving inspectors were putting our enforcement at the point of entry where we're more likely to catch the greater number of offenders.
Yeah, but, but again, I don't know if you caught in, in Alicia's comments regarding your question, Commissioner Burrell, you said, well, you know, what about Waverly Lake? And the response is, well, we can afford to check one day a week. And she didn't say, you know, we can afford to check on Saturday or the 4th of July for every lake out there, right? Somebody's going to get Tuesday, right? Because you're hiring staff and you have to do this. So now, if you think about trying to prevent infestations, and, yeah, you'll get the exit inspection one day a week. So, there's a calculus here of saying, well, am I better getting 100 percent coverage?
But are you getting 100 percent coverage? Because you're only getting it from those that follow the law. Because you're getting, you know, because, I mean, we have to agree to the fact that those that don't follow the law are probably not going to go to your regional inspection station.
Again, in fairness, if you look at some of the advantages of the law, one of them was it actually affects riparian owners. So if you find somebody that is launching boats from their lawn, okay, they're not in compliance with this ordinance.
Unless they have their boat inspected.
Unless they have their boat inspected, in which case, they're fine. But this is the only law, see, outside of this, there is nothing you can do for private access, there is nothing that you can do for the riparian owner to get that boat inspected. Clearly, you know, it's illegal to transport zebra mussels into a lake regardless of how you do it, but this is one of the few ways that you can affect the entire lake. And, and one of the reasons we had two, two landings that were not the DNR landing in this program to demonstrate exactly that effect. We don't get as many boats, it's not as efficient, but it's the only way that we can do that. And, so, so again, is this perfect? Is it going to catch everything? I'm just saying, but look at the numbers, you got 1,000, 1,000 more boats inspected.
I just had a, and this may be, show my ignorance a little bit, but you can educate me. If you had your boat in, let's say, a Lake Sylvia that had zebra mussel and starry stonewort, right? Would it, I'm guessing anyway, it would be almost imperative that it not only be inspected before it goes to another lake, it would almost have to go through a decontamination, right? Because you, even if you drain your boat and, and the motor, there's still stuff in there. Am I wrong on that, or?
Well, I don't think you're entirely wrong, I, we have some other experts in the room that have, that have studied this, but, but the reality on the ground is, we want to tell everybody, you know, get a decon, that's what we'd like. It's not currently a policy that every boat leaving an infested lake-
Get decontaminated.
Get decontaminated. I'd love to see that, but it's, it's not there in state statute. So, so you're only required to get a decontamination if, you know, there's, if you actually are infested, there's no kind of general practice. And further, you know, the, the number of boats that are carrying water, these wake boats, they're almost impossible to get completely dry. We know empirically that they're carrying water, we know that there's a threat there. There's more work to be done there.
But like the starry stonewort is an algae, and it only takes a cell or two, and it's growing, you know?
Yep.
So. Right, and it's, and it's one of the ones we know the least about compared to, let's say, you know, we've had more experience with zebra mussels. So, would it be lovely to have a requirement for exit decontamination for infested waters, or maybe infested waters for just those species that are in very few lakes? That would all be great. But at some point, you have to put a stake in the ground and you have to get some progress, try to drive the discussion forward. And I would say, for as much animus as this program has caused, it's also caused discussion, and I think it's, it's been-
Well, I think your biggest thing is the educational end of it, I mean, I, the point you just made, it raised some dander or whatever, you know, raised, ruffled some feathers, but the education is out there, people are talking about it anyways.
Yeah, and I would, I don't want to take up all of everybody's time and like to allow for other comments, I would just say that, that everything that we're doing here really is in, in the best interest, we're looking for the best and the brightest ideas, but we also don't have the luxury of, of not moving the ball forward. Think of what we're doing here as, as one component, it doesn't stop other efforts from, from going on elsewhere, and it does, it absolutely does not stop us from improving this project that we've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Come on up here, state your name and where you're from, make a comment, race up there.
Hello, my name is Tony Graham, I am president of the Maple Lake Property Owners Association. We have been, had been discussing this program for probably a year and a half, once we found out that the pilot was underway, and I believe it was the end of 2016 or 17 season, and we had begun discussing it as a board. And late last summer, we came together on it again, a couple of board meetings, and in December, we sent out a poll to our lake association members, and also the people who we had email addresses for on our lake that were not members of our association. We wanted to be fair, we wanted to have clarity, transparency of that, you know, again, this isn't our lake, this is everybody's lake, and we were looking for guidance on what the best thing to do was. So we sent out an email poll and had a very good response, and the people who responded, we had 85 percent of the people that were in favor of that. The, I think it was the 11th, one of the first Saturdays in January, we held a town hall meeting at the Maple Lake Township Hall, and we had a turnout of 48 people, which represented about 41 properties. And we had a long discussion, and I just, again, covered some talking points on AIS, describing the history of it to our people, and we probably, the discussion went on for well over an hour, and again, as a show of hands, people who were in attendance of that meeting, again, was 85, 86 percent, the people who attended were in favor of us pursuing a membership of the RIT program. So, Maple Lake has two invasive species, Eurasian milfoam, which has been in our lake since, I think it's 1987, and we have flowering rush in our lake, which is another invasive, we've had that for about two years. Zebra mussels are just newly found in sugar to the north of us, and that is very concerning to us. Starry stonewort being in the lakes west of us, coronas is also very concerning. According to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, the upper Great Lakes ecosystem has 184 AIS. And, one of the things that is very apparent is, when you dig into each one and find out how it got to us, at some point, it came into the St. Lawrence River, through the Great Lakes, and into Duluth Harbor, and then it ended up on somebody's boat and made its way south in our state. The majority of the AIS, that's what you will find, is how it traveled to us. I know this isn't a perfect scenario that we have going, but we're, I believe we're making progress. To stop everybody, the people who are following the law and the people who are not following the law, would require somebody to be at our two accesses on Maple Lake 24 hours a day. We need to catch, if it's one person, we need to catch that person. And just some really easy math, if we were to hire somebody to sit at our access for just 10 to 12 hours a day, when most people come and launch their boats, and we could get them to work for $10 an hour for four months out of the year, that would cost us between $28,000 and $30,000 a year, just for two people for two accesses. Not feasible. The program that is being offered here is a starting point. Again, we know it's not perfect, we know we need to improve on it, and I believe we will get there. I hope, too, that we will see more, more inspection facilities. One last story of one of my association members, when I was sending out emails, I got an email back from him, they are cabin owners and they don't live there, they come to the lake on the weekend. They just bought a brand-new boat last year, and they don't have a boat lift or a dock from where they live to tie their boat up. So they come to the lake from out of town, they launch their boat, they play, that night, the boat goes back on the trailer, back up to their driveway, their garage, and it sits there. Sunday morning, they do the same thing, they put the boat back in the water and they play, they take it out at the end of the day and put it back in their garage. He was very quick to point out that that means that every morning, before they launch their boat, they have to go to Annandale to get an inspection. Said, yep, that's right, everybody will need to go get an inspection. Well, long story short, that is, that is one story of a lake owner, membership, that is willing to do that, is willing to take that extra hour probably each time and go to Annandale to get an inspection to protect our lake. So I know this is an inconvenience to people, but for somebody to say that they don't have time, they don't want to, that it's an inconvenience, I, you know, it's, I think we need to be more diligent than that, protecting our lakes from the next invasive. Thank you.
So, Tony, from my standpoint, fundamentally, I mean, principally, I think it's, this is a nice program if we can overcome some barriers. The number-one barrier is in the enforcement aspect. That's the reason I say, because right now, the way it's modeled, we're only policing those that are probably following the law, we're not policing those that aren't. And because those that aren't, we, basically, from- And because those that aren't, we, basically, from an enforcement standpoint, we're very unlikely to write a ticket. I mean, last year, we wrote no tickets for it. And going into next year, based on what we're putting together for enforcement standpoint is, it's hard to say. We might write out maybe, I would say, we'd be hopeful, maybe a dozen. And there's probably more than a dozen people that are, it's hard, I'm pulling a number off the top of my head, but just based on this contract and the number of hours and the way they're going to be able to, to service it, it's challenging. And I mean, if I go forward with it, we'd be more to find out if we can enforce it. Because that's where the piece into this next year is really important. For those that you are skeptical on whether it's really an AIS program, I wouldn't be able to answer that question unless I found out whether we can enforce it or not. You know, that's the reason I would, those are people that are opposing to it, we don't have enough information to say that it's really in AIS prevention or not, because we don't know if we can enforce it or not. And to speak to the, that's where my, my question is, is, you know, from a standpoint, where you're at the ramp, you know that, that, that is, we're catching good or bad people that are following it versus, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to decide if we're making them go to an off-site location, are we only catching the people that are good, the people that want to know the laws and want to follow the laws? And I, I mean, I'm just curious. I really want-
You know, I think, I think at-the-ramp inspections would be the most convenient for everybody and providing that it was staffed. Staffed twenty-four hours a day, we would, we would catch everybody. I guess one thing that I don't like about that idea is I don't want somebody peeling zebra mussels or starry stonewort off their boat or trailer at my Maple Lake access. It's right there, feet away from our, our water's edge. So until you have a, some, some form of a decontamination facility with a, not sure what the right terminology is for, but something that would catch the wastewater so that it can be dealt with away from the body, from the lakes, that, that's just another thought I had too about at-ramp inspections. If we could have exit inspections at all the ramps, that would be ideal. Then we wouldn't have to worry about anything. But I think that's, financially, it's hard to get there. But then, going back to this program, it's, it's one way that we can make baby steps and somehow, over time, garner more funds to expand.
Well, and I want to appreciate, Tony, your group going out there and, and trying to get a unbiased approach to whether you should be involved in this or not. Now, because like you said, it's easy for people to pinpoint those that live on a lake, want it, and those that don't, don't, you know?
Right. You know, we've, Maple Lake, the Property Owner Association, it's been a few years ago, but we used to stock walleye every year in our lake. The DNR would do walleye fry and we would do fingerlings and we, we would pay for that. Well, that, that focus of, those funds has shifted to AIS prevention and spraying weeds and keeping our waterways clear so boat traffic can get through. And that's, you know, that's something that we would like to get back to someday too, is stocking. And we're not stocking fish for our own personal lake shore owners. It's for all the fishermen to come and enjoy fishing on our lake, which Maple Lake has been known to be a good fishing lake for many years and we would like to continue that.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on French Lake. Couple questions, concerns. First, who sits on the Governance Council for the Regional Inspection Program? Is it all lake shore owner, like property owners?
Well, there's no, there's an advisory committee to it. There's no actually governing body to it. Basically, the, the ordinance that allows them to operate is held by the county. The enforcement is done through the sheriff's department through a contract. It basically is administered through soil and water and it is daily managed by-
Sorry, I think I know what you're referring to. I think you, the Governance Council was the previous name for the Wright County Regional Inspection Coalition, which is the group, the group of participating lake associations that are funding their group. And then now we formed the AIS Advisory Committee in addition to that, which a couple representatives sit on and then we get the summary that Vetch, Commissioner Vetch described. And what was your question, Mr. Chair? I'm sorry.
No, it was his, because he wanted to know who sat on it. So it's kind of a mixed bag.
Right. But that goes back to my point. This initial push came from the lake property owners without a whole lot of input from sportsmen, which before I lived on the lake, I was an avid fisherman. A couple other questions. And again, the same concern, the lakes that are not on this program, are we getting traffic pushed to us because they don't want to go through the inspection program? Correct me if I'm wrong, I still don't get a rover. Last two years, I've, I do not get a rover on French Lake. We're deemed low risk. We're three miles from Sylvia. We're still deemed low risk. We don't see a rover ever. It was brought up, the wakeboard boats, I mean, they got bulkheads, they take in water when they get to the lake to make a better wake, they pump it out before they leave, they don't get it all the way out. What are, what are they transporting that we can't even detect? Another big concern, how are you going to cover the initiative funding when that goes away? The way I understand it, initiative grants are for new and emerging technologies or procedures. This has been ongoing for how many years? When is that money going to dry up and how are you going to cover it? Hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. Right now, the lake associations that are under are contributing a hundred and ten. You're going to ask them to more than double their contribution when that money goes away? Or are you going to have to go out and get even more lakes? Coronas. My dad has property on Lake Coronas. I wish you guys would quit using the scare tactic of Coronas. Part of the problem there is it was five years before they identified the weed. Is that correct?
Possibly longer, no one knows.
Correct. So you want to try and compare that as a scare tactic when it was left unchecked for five, six, seven years? That's not the case anymore. We know what we're looking for. We know how to spot it right away, how to keep it through the accesses. You know, it's just, that's always the greatest scare tactic to use is Coronas. Fishing is still great on Coronas. A lot of people still go there. It has not wrecked, hurt property values, any of that, which is another argument that always comes up. My two cents on that. Has anybody talked to Annandale business owners? Specifically, like little gyms, BJ's Debate Shops, Attack of Shops, are they getting hurt by this? Because I would hate to see them small-town businesses go away. Final one. And, Tony? You brought up, you know, fish stocking. You know, DNR pays money, stocks lakes and these fish in these lakes. Do they determine that based on how many people are using the lakes, stuff like that? And by this program and traffic going down, are we going to start getting less and less of those funds allocated our way for our lakes? You know, we get walleye stocked in French Lake. I love it. Catch a couple every year. It's, it's great, but I don't want to see that go away because we have traffic and our amount of traffic on our lakes is going down compared to other areas.
Josh, I appreciate, you, you, you put in a lot of really good valid points and, and that's where the, you know, this is, ultimately, every commissioner is going to agree that our goal is, is to prevent AIS. I mean, wholeheartedly, it's just a matter of what's the best way to go about it. And, because I, to the people in the general public, I mean, I lose either way because you're going to look at it, one side's going to be thinking that I, that I'm better off serving them versus the, this way. And it's just trying to, we spent a great deal of time, and I appreciate everybody in this room that sat in these AIS committees, because we tried, and even outside of that room, I had lots of conversations with a lot of people to try and find some sort of a compromise that, that really achieves what both sides want. Unfortunately, we haven't found a clear answer to it yet. And I mean, that's, that's the question, is where we're going to come out of this room? Is, is it going forward with this program? Going to be that answer? Or is it, is it going to be going back to the drawing board and finding something totally different? Because I think we all recognize at this point, Wright County has to have some sort of a pilot program if we're not going forward with this one. It needs to be something different that's trying to preserve our lakes.
And I understand, you know, the theory behind the program, but as a pilot, it was supposed to show the effectiveness of it and hopefully have the DNR takeover and these regional stations are within fifteen, twenty miles of any lake. Is that going to happen anytime in the future? You know, and that's part of the, you know, part of the way that, you know, by calling it a pilot now, after a couple of years, let's expand it, let's try this, let's try that. We're not, we're going past the pilot part.
And that's where, I think right now, the reason it's really still constituted a pilot is because we have way more questions than we have answers to. And I think, right, you know, in this way, in the next year, it would probably not be a pilot program because we, in theory, should have our last couple of questions answered from, is it expandable, scalable, and is it enforceable? As Chris's points, those are the two biggest questions that we have at this point. And affordable. Affordable.
In my opinion, if you're going to pick and choose and invite lakes on and whatever, and we did get an invite, just it's hard to get ahold of all the members and make a decision without having a, you know, a good discussion, so we have not acted on it. It should be all or none within a side, within a certain radius. All the lakes are in, all the lakes are out within that radius, not pick and choose and ask for more money, you know, this and that. It's somehow, we got to make it so that any lake within that radius is on the program.
And that is one thing that I had the, the, because there's no metrics to the dollar amounts that are put in. It, it's kind of at a free will offering. And that makes the funding very unpredictable, which makes me very nervous to, to support a program that doesn't have sustainable predictable funding. You know, if those numbers were basically, all these entities were, say, were in a lid and every lake had a metric based on the number of square acres that determined how much money they had to put in, that it was a definitive amount that you know you could predictably, that might be, I mean, in basically a square mile radius, these lakes are in it, then the metrics would speak for, for where the funding would come from. But the way it is right now, does Maple Lake next year think, gosh, you know, I don't think we got eighteen thousand dollars worth of value, maybe only want to put twelve thousand dollars in? And do you kick them out of the program for that?
Well, that's the concern we had, you know, because they asked for a small contribution, but it's like, so what are you going to ask for next year, the year after? Because they want a three-year commitment to the program. And we have very limited funds and we, we treat milfoil every year. You know, so it's, it's what's the best use of our funds and if the amount goes up, can we afford it?
And that's where, I mean, that was a big question that we haven't answered, is the sustainability of the funding. And there still isn't a good, clear answer on where that's going to come from, because next year, basically, there's not, there's going to be a big gaping hole, a hole of about a hundred thousand dollars plus that's going to need to be figured out for it to expand in twenty, or not expand, but to sustain in twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Come on up. Sorry. Debra, you-
Commissioners, good afternoon. My name's Ron Elsner. I'm treasurer of Sugar Lake Association. I have been Sugar Lake's rep to the Governance Council, the WRIP Governance Council since the beginning for the past two years. Sugar Lake Association, a year ago, the board voted to be part of the expansion in twenty When it was obvious that the expansion wasn't going to happen in twenty eighteen for a number of reasons, we didn't go public with our request to be part of the, part of the expansion because it just wasn't happening. So we didn't go public with it. But we have on record our support of the, the program overall. Go back to seventeen, we, we sent letters to, to this board plus the governor and Commissioner Landwehr, expressing our support for the, for the program. Sugar Lake has on its own a pretty robust inspection program at the ramp. In the past three years, we've, we've increased our budget to twenty-five thousand dollars to do that work. It used to be on the order of about ten thousand dollars. As things have, have, you know, the, the spread of AIS in Wright County and this part of the state has, has gone on, excuse me, we, we upped our coverage at the ramps. Our twenty-five thousand dollars is based, is calculated off of, we have two ramps. We have one inspector each ramp, ten hours a day, three days a week, twenty weeks out of the year. And so the arithmetic, last year, Alicia was twenty-four, nine, or something like that, was, was what our budget was with Soil and Water Conservation District for inspection services. That, that number pretty much set the basis for our twenty-five thousand dollar amount on the, the budget for the, for the WRIP going forward. We said we'd be willing to take that, that money that we've spent on, on ramp inspection and move it forward. When I say our, our inspection program is pretty robust, last year, and this is stats from Alicia's work at Soil and Water Conservation District, we conducted over forty-seven hundred inspections at Sugar Lake ramps. Of those forty-seven hundred inspections, two thousand of those were exit inspections. Of those two thousand exit inspections, what's recorded is just about four hundred corrections. We don't think you can really call them violations, but, but there were corrections that the inspectors made. People leaving the ramp who forgot to pull their bilge plug, got reminded, pull your bilge plug. People ready to leave the ramp with vegetation on their, on their trailers or boats, clean that off before you leave and that, and that got corrected. We think that speaks, you know, with, with exit inspections, we think that speaks strongly to protecting the other lakes in the region. You know, we, we, we sit there, we sit here now and look at going to the program and, and doing entry inspections and we say, boy, we'll get a much higher percentage of entry inspections taken care of. So we know we won't bring anything else to Sugar Lake. We don't want anything else to come in. But what, what we lose is, you know, people taking stuff away from Sugar Lake that we don't want to go to the rest of the state. We don't, we, we, we don't want to see other lakes go through what we've had to go through. We've been fighting Eurasian milfoil. We're part of one of the early DNR research projects for whole lake treatment. Our, our budget for Eurasian milfoil and curly leaf pondweed is thirty thousand dollars a year for treatment, has been for the last ten years. We, we work hard at doing that. You know, we had, we had one decontamination that happened this year. One of the inspectors noticed a boat that was pretty well crapped up, you know, asked him to, to go get it decontaminated. Lo and behold, in the, you know, leftovers from his decontamination, there was a zebra mussel in there. And that, that tipped off Alicia and the rest of the folks to say, we got to, we got to start looking. And lo and behold, we went looking in the fall and we got zebs. And, and so I think folks on the lake, myself plus the cadre of others, we probably looked at seventy, sixty-five or seventy different, you know, equipment at sixty-five or seventy different locations, and we found zebs at about two-thirds of those. And so, no big clusters, no, you know, massive growths, but they're just scattered out and they're everywhere. And, and so it's like, okay, well, now we got zebs. And so, so, you know, those are the things that, you can see the milfoil on the boat. You can, you know, you can, you can see pondweed if it's on the boat, but zebs are in the bilge, zebs are everywhere. And so the villagers are just out there. And so, all that said, we as, we as Sugar Lake support the, support the program. We, 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 we think it's, we think it's the right way to go. Like I said, you balance your ability to help with, with exit inspections against doing a higher percentage of entry inspections. And, and so that's a, that's a tough one to juggle, but we're supportive of the program.
I'm guessing you had a really challenging decision on that because, I mean, when you're giving up four hundred inspections of ones, like you said, from the, the effort of you wanting to prevent AIS and the spread of AIS, giving up those four hundred inspections, like you said, it wasn't an easy decision for you.
We're, our board is still wrestling with the question right now. We, you know, we, the board, a year ago, came, came out in solid support of, of joining an expansion. A lot of, there's a lot of water that's gone under the bridge this, this past year and we're, we're getting the board together as we speak. We're in the process of, of bringing folks up to speed and, and getting ready to reaffirm our, reaffirm our choice. So, and when we do that, we will, we will send, you know, confirmation to this group, to the, to the commissioners.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment or add any insight or ask any questions? Come on up.
Sometimes I can't help.
I'm Blaine Barkley from Annandale. I am chairperson of the, uh, invasive species committee on Lake Sylvia. Um, I, I think that at times we forget that Lake Sylvia didn't invent any of this stuff. Lake Sylvia has gotten it from other lakes in Minnesota that have come into it. Lake Sylvia is a popular lake. Um, this year, we will probably spend close to fifty thousand dollars keeping that lake as clean as we can. Um, Heidi Wolf's here, Alicia's here. We treat for starry stonewort, we treat continuously during the summer, and, uh, we've done that for the last two years. Starry stonewort, um, we start treating, the first time will either be like the end of June when it's starting to show. Uh, and according to the label instructions, we will come back thirty days later and inspect to see what's left. And if we find any evidence of starry stonewort, we treat again. And we have a diver come back in and look, and we treat again. We've treated four times a year in the summer, each of the last two years. This last fall, we knocked it down, the, and, and the person who was doing the inspecting on the lake, you have to have an independent person, nobody connected with us. Um, this last fall, the last inspection, he found exactly one bubble, which is like a seed, and he found one segment that was about one inch long in the one point six acres. I mean, we'd knocked it down as close to nothing as any lake probably ever has. But the thing you have to remember is, other lakes are gonna get starry stonewort, and it's not necessarily gonna come from Sylvia. You have all of the popular fishing lakes, or I won't, maybe I shouldn't say all, but you have a, a large majority of the best fishing lakes in northern Minnesota, uh, that now have starry stonewort in it. They have zebra mussels in them. I, I think the year before, um, starry stonewort was found in Sylvia. Uh, Chris could correct me if I'm wrong, but we had, like, just like Cedar Lake, we had people at the access seven days a week. Um, and, uh, I don't remember if it was eleven, twelve hours a day, seven days a week, all summer. And so we had counts of how many boats went in and how many boats went out, where they came from. And I think the, it was either the year before or two years before, starry stonewort was found in our lake, we found that there were, as I recall, I was thinking it was either six or nine boats that came to Sylvia that launched, that came from Coronas. And so was it surprising then that we would end up with, there was nothing we could do, we couldn't stop them, okay? There was no provision to stop them. And, and we've had occasions in the past where we've turned boats away, that's when we had our own inspectors there. So Sylvia likewise gave up the, the twenty, I think it was probably close to twenty-five thousand a year that we were spending for at-the-ramp inspections. We likewise gave that up. And, and awful lot of our thought was, we can't afford to have every other lake infected around Annandale, because after a while, it gets to be a geometric, it gets out of control to where every single boat is in danger on every lake that it goes to. And so relative to starry stonewort on Sylvia, um, I, I was reading, uh, this last fall, they found it at Medicine Lake. And the way they found it at Medicine Lake is, a boat was coming out and somebody happened to notice starry stonewort on the propeller. Well, what that meant was boats are driving through it and chewing it up. And, uh, on Sylvia, we've never, we've never let it get, uh, uh, long enough, or, you know, spread out enough to get it to where it really should even be in a boat, or, or knocked loose by a boat or a motor. Not only do we inspect the one point six acre landing and treat it, but we also have divers that go to the other likely places on the lake, where if, if somebody could be launching a boat on a private access, we have those areas checked as well. We also go out into deeper water than where we, where starry stonewort has been found, and we also go north of the access and south of the access to try to make absolutely certain that we have that situation under control. Um, so I, I don't want you to think that just because a lake gets an invasive species, it's coming out of Sylvia. It's not. I mean, we, we treat for curly leaf, we treat for Eurasian, uh, we, we have zebra mussels which you can't treat for, uh, but we spend to, to try to keep that lake usable by everybody and, and really have been very successful. Um, probably as successful or more successful than any other lake in the country in terms of getting this down, that one point six acres. Um, to our knowledge, it has not spread anywhere in the lake, and we had exactly one seed and one fragment that was found in that area. Now this spring, we'll go look again, because these bubbles get buried under sediment as boats go in and out. It'll get buried under sediment. We'll have some sprouting again this spring, and, uh, we will be putting in our, our request for permits to go in and, and replicate the process that we've used, and that is to keep that stuff down to where it's as little of a danger as possible to everybody. Um, treating the lake and trying to monitor to keep weeds and invasives out, uh, I think has now just about gotten to the point to where the cost exceeds, uh, the dues that the people on the lake pay. I mean, that's how close it is. Um, and what's next? Well, it's likely to be spiny water fleas. Now Maple Lake's got flowering rush, uh, I think Granite Lake's got flowering rush, we don't have that. But Lake Minnetonka's got it. And, and if we get flowering rush, uh, if you ask me, that's more likely coming from Minnetonka than it is from Maple Lake or, or Granite, uh, because there's too much boat traffic. We know the boat traffic between Minnetonka and Sylvia. So every one of these weeds, every one of these invasives adds costs that unless somehow you can slow it down, it just is going to break these associations. They, they can't keep absorbing the costs.
I wish there was a way for, and this is something that the DNR is gonna have to do, if, you know, if the recreational users had a way to fund the, protecting our lakes uniformly like lake associations do, you know, this number right here would double. And I tell you, we could do a lot more if we could double that money. But right now, there's no way for a boater to make a contribution to, to these entities, you know? If there, if, because ultimately, I mean, we could do a lot more, but we don't have a lot of resources, and the resources is funds to protect the lakes, you know, and that's...
I'd like to correct one thing. There are...
You gotta come up to the microphone. Gotta hit the microphone.
Yeah. He's got a good voice, but he should...
I know he does.
With another camera.
There are fifty-six hundred fishable lakes in Minnesota, and I believe there's only twelve or, how many?
Thirteen.
Thirteen lakes with starry stonewort. Starry stonewort is not in every good fishing lake in Minnesota.
Well, it's some of the very best.
Well, it's not in the very, it's in some good lakes, but it's not in the very best ones, it's not in our largest ones. And, and I just wanted to say that that's a scare tactic, uh, to say that it's, that it's in all of our good fishing lakes.
Thank you. Thank you. So, all right. If there's anyone else here that has any other further questions, comments? One last time, no one else like to make a comment? Come on up.
I don't have anything prepared, I'll be brief. My name is Jefferson Bishop, I'm from Annandale. Uh, I wear a number of hats in this scenario. I'm a lake homeowner, uh, I'm a lake service provider, uh, I'm a business owner in Annandale, uh, and I am the program contractor for this particular program. And I can tell you, in a lot of the scenarios, my interests are conflicted. I look at it individually as a, um, as a business owner. If you look at this program or, and this problem as, as being negative for business, it's, it's woefully short-sighted, uh, to, to look at it as being bad for business. If you consider the lakes in the area as a resource and why you get your business to begin with, you need to be looking at protecting those. Uh, as a program contractor, I look at it and say, I look at Meeker County, we also provide the services in Meeker County, uh, and their metric is how many dollars per inspection? That's how they measure it. Um, it's a little more complicated here, but, uh, if you look at it as what is the most efficient model, I, I believe this is it. Uh, as a lake homeowner, I think it's pretty obvious where I stand on it, that this, something needs to be done. Uh, and as a lake service provider, I'm very against it. Uh, it is, it is very, very inconvenient. Uh, the cost of transports has gone up significantly. Uh, the cost of, uh, operating has gone up for me as a lake service provider, because I am one of the biggest risks to the lakes as a lake service provider. Uh, I bring docks and lifts from lake to lake to lake, I bring a barge from lake to lake to lake, and it's not the fishermen and it's not the surfboat owners, it's me. Uh, and if I, uh, want to do my, my part to protect this resource, this is the cost of doing business, because without the lakes and the, and the quality that we've got, uh, my business doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments? All right. So...
I, I guess I'm gonna have to ask somebody a question, so...
Sure.
When, and this is to, for somebody from the lid or Alicia could help too, but when, when the Initiative Foundation money goes away, what's gonna replace it? What's the long-term plan?
Well, I mean...
Because, I mean, we're, 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 we're gonna be asked here to expand a pilot program that is unsustainable without the Initiative Foundation money right now, and I have, I can't see it, I guess, so...
Chris?
I'll take a crack. Yeah. Microphone. I knew you were gonna... Yep.
Still Chris Hector. Um, um, what we did with this program is we expanded this to a hundred percent coverage from as close as we could get to ice out to the end of October. I would love to say that that's what we should do. Um, but if you look at the lakes that have come up here and said, you know, we were spending twenty-five thousand dollars, they were doing that for twenty-five, maybe, maybe forty...
Oh, it's only...
Weeks, okay? First thing you do is you start cutting back. You say, well, gee, early spring, lower risk, you know, we're not getting much in October, and you manage this like any other budget that you manage. What I'm saying is, if I can give you a ten-for-one value on your money, then use that, and if, and if you can't afford to do it in the third week of October, all right, then that's what you do. But you don't want to give up your ten-for-one leverage. And that's one of the things that you can do. Bringing in more lakes is one of the things you can do. And between the state and the lake owners and the boaters, you know, we're gonna have to have a discussion about raising more funds. I, I think for Wright County, and I can't speak for the state, but I think roughly if you doubled the numbers, you could do the program that we've put together for all of Wright County. And, and I think the numbers would work. If you, if you can't get there, don't give up on the model of regional inspection, because that still works. And by the way, you know, and, 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 you know, you, you have to make the cautious decisions, but I, I would say that we don't know that it doesn't scale at this point. And, and, and I'd say, at some point, you do have to make some tough choices. I suggest that we look at that over the next year in anticipation of 2020. We'll have some more data about enforcement, and at some point, you may have to say, all right, you know, I'm gonna have a regional inspection station, but I can't afford to put a decon unit there unless I find some more money. Right? And so you, you do those sorts of things.
And I guess, if, I wanna hang out for a second. What, what, where, where I'm having a problem is, I'm afraid, because I think it, it kinda happened already last year when the Initiative Foundation talked about taking the money away, come to the county, the county's gonna fund this. And I look at it and I say, we are taking the money that's given us for AIS and a hundred percent of it is going out for that already. And I'm saying that, you know, if we can't do it within that budget, I don't, I just don't want to be coming back to the county for the money.
They, they recognize that.
Okay, you heard that before.
That conversation was...
That was one of our conversations.
Okay, I do wanna make some other comments, and this is just, I, I know a little bit about out west. I was at a conference one time and they talked about the AIS in the high mountain lakes in Wyoming, Utah, Colorado. They take AIS serious out there. Um, you get caught with your boat not inspected, decontaminated, without the proper tag on the highway out there. I think they take your boat, I mean, it's serious. You, you, and I don't know that, that one for certain, but it's very serious, it's a super high fine if they don't...
Colorado, too.
Yeah. But I said unless Minnesota is going to take the AIS that serious, it's just gonna be a stall thing, it's just gonna be a matter of time before it takes over everywhere, I guess. Now I do have something that I wanted to throw out, and it's not anything that we can do about here, it would take a state, a state law, but I drive tour bus part-time. I have a logbook that I fill out every time I go on a trip. And I mentioned this one time, so a couple people might know about this, but all it takes, you get a logbook from whatever people, the DMV or whatever can give you a logbook, and it goes with your particular boat numbers. And when you go on to Howard Lake Lake, you enter it on there, and you're out on the lake, and you don't have Howard Lake entered in there, you're in trouble. Now if I go from Howard Lake, then I go to Lake Sylvia, I put Lake Sylvia in there. If I go from Lake Sylvia, or when I switch lakes, I think you should be going through decontamination. But, and for that, for that one owner that lives on the lake that brings his boat back, he puts it in, he's logged into Lake Sylvia, he wouldn't have to do anything more, he's still logged into Lake Sylvia. He doesn't need to get re-inspected. So if I'm a fisherman and I went out to, to Ramsey Lake, whatever, and then I'm logged in, and then I don't go to any other lake, I don't need to go get decontaminated again after that. So I think that, to do that, you were talking about how this has helped educate people just your program, and I believe it has. I think by initiating something like that, a state law where you just do that, and now if they want to do it electronically, they can. The DNR, I mean, they have this thing, you get a farm, and if I want to get a burning permit, I can go right on the computer online, I could probably do it from my smartphone to where I'm on, you know, Lake Sylvia now, now I'm on Granite Lake, whatever. So you have that. I think that would do more to slow AIS than anything, because now when I switch lakes, you get your boat decontaminated. That's all there is to it. And that could be a regional decontamination station, you know, set up, set up around, and, and then now I, if it's decontaminated, I don't really need an inspection anymore, because all I have, no, serious, so, because if I, if, if the guy comes out and I'm on another lake and I did not, because when you go to the inspection sta- lake, and I did not, because when you go to the inspection station, the decontamination spa, excuse me, decontamination station, let's say I was just on Howard Lake, now I'm gonna go to Sylvia, before I go to Sylvia, it better be entered in there and stamped with their little seal that I had my boat decontaminated. I, I just think it'd be a great thing, so call your legislators and tell them Charlie Braille's idea. But, but at that, if, if this has helped education-wise, and I do believe it does, man, if that went raise everybody's, you know, um, attention. And for a fisherman, like I said, you, if you're switching lakes, why shouldn't you have your boat decontaminated to make sure? Because I, I think I asked some of that question before, you, just an inspection, you can't prove that there's no AIS in there, but if you had some, you know, whatever, you put hydrogen peroxide in the outdrive or something to get rid of, zebra mussel, or, you know, there's gotta be some way to kill this stuff, I don't know, but it's, it's a frustrating thing. You, you guys know it, you live it, so...
Yeah. And, I mean, I, I really appreciate the efforts of everyone here that is working so diligently, has been working so hard for several years now, and it's to, to find solutions, because Charlie's right, I mean, we don't wanna lose our lakes, we wanna, we wanna do everything we can to preserve them so we can keep going fishing and water skiing and just boating, so, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You have any questions for anyone else?
Not, no, that, that's kinda...
So I'm gonna give at least a synopsis. So going forward here, uh, being two commissioners short, we're not gonna debate, uh, a lot of the merits of the program at this time, uh, it'll get forwarded on to the minutes. Uh, you think turn around February twenty-sixth, roughly? So basically, the minutes will come back on February twenty-sixth, they'll come back forward with no recommendation. In that meantime, I encourage you to conversate with any commissioners that are here or not here regarding your point of view. If you would like myself to meet with any of you, eh, get ahold of me, I'd love to have a good conversation with you, 'cause on February twenty-sixth, basically, what will be, uh, before the board for a decision will be to, either to repeal the ordinance, in which case, the program would end. It would be to, the amend the ordinance by adding these lakes or any other amendments to the ordinance for it to carry forward, or the potential chance of just leaving the ordinance in its current capacity going forward. Those are the three decisions that are before the board, uh, on February twenty-sixth, just so you have, uh, that in your mind when conversating with us, and where your point of view is, and how to get across to us on that.
Mr. Chair, you had mentioned, um, if someone's interest, if a group is interested in meeting to, I mean, we'd have to, if we, as, as a board, if more than two of us are there, we have to, you know, do a posting, we have to do public notice, so if you wanna have a meeting with one or two and, you know, part of the, the AIS committee, if that works, you know, please, please let us know so we can set something up.
So with that, Steph?
Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on the public hearing, are you leaving it open to the twenty-sixth, or are you closing it right now for further public comment?
Well, are we actually having public hearing at this, 'cause we're not actually amending the ordinance, so those...
We will have another public hearing after your recommendation.
This, this public hearing is just for the record for the minutes, correct? That's it?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if you wanna...
I mean, I guess I'll leave it, I guess we can leave it open for anybody that wants comments. Now, I do note, anyone, eh, if there would be an amendment to the ordinance, we will start a new public hearing process, uh, it could be as little as ten days, could be as long as thirty, on that date, we will set that window of time. Anybody that has rendered comments thus far, that would want their comments to be part of that open hearing, would need to resubmit those. So letters from lake associations, eh, if we would on February twenty-sixth, open up a new public hearing to amend the ordinance, and you want to put your voice in by your association or by individual, please resubmit them into either administration or your county board members.
But, Mr. Chair, the, the parties who've already, who've already, um, submitted comments, they would be entered on the twenty-sixth, correct?
If you produce it...
If we amend the current one, then, I, I guess I'm a little confused here.
Mr. Chair Commissioner Houston, if you move to amend the ordinance, we have to have another public hearing.
Okay. Got it.
And then we'd start over the processing?
Then we'd start the...
Yeah, process all over, and the, the new comments would have to be resubmitted.
This public hearing was just simply off of, how do you wanna proceed forward?
Yep. That I, that I got.
Uh, like I said, I, I apologize for not being able to render any kind of decision here today, but with the lack of other members here today, um, it would, could potentially make the recommendation one-sided, and I would, don't wanna go forward to, with minutes that are not painting the picture of the full board, so with that being the case, we will go forward with no recommendation at this time.
They, they did have excused absences, they had, yeah, yeah. So, they didn't just not show up.
Just to clarify for record-keeping purposes, this was a meeting to take public comment, but it was not a public hearing.
Correct. This is just, yep, just a, basically, um, public comment for recommendations to move forward. Okay, well then, we will adjourn our committee, the whole, from February twelfth at four fifty-six.
Thanks, everybody.